Bruce, you must have something really good, too.
Of course I do. It's Bruce Danielson, and I guess I'm here to entertain you, too.
I'd like to call this in for a meeting on Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand twenty-one.
Our first item would be committee or commission reports, Sulan Heritage Museum Board, Counselor Starr.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The one exciting thing that's happening, other than the museum trucking along, is the Mountain Plains Museum Directors Conference. It's going to be here in Sioux Falls coming up later this month. And what's exciting about that group hasn't been here since the late nineteen seventies. So it's due for our turn to show them all the great things that we have going on, not only in Sioux Falls, but in this region of South Dakota. So there will be, I believe they were up to about three hundred and fifty registrations, which is considerably less than they're usually in that five to six hundred range. But they'll have some online events. They'll have a couple of events that are hosted, not only at the Old Courthouse Museum, but the Irene Hall Resource, Museum Resource Center. And we'll really get a lot of good national exposure, both from writers and museum directors from the central states of the United States, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Southeast Council of Governments on September eighth was not held, so we'll skip that one. Counsel remarks? Counselors, any remarks at this time? Counselor Neitzler.
Just for information for the council, yesterday, the interim rules committee of the legislature met and reviewed the rules for medical cannabis, and all but I think five of the sections were approved. That means, as early as today, the Secretary of Health could sign those and send those over to the Secretary of State, and they would become effective twenty days after they're received by the Secretary of State. If they were filed today, they'd be in effect on October fourth. If there's any delay, then the days move back. Those other five items or so, they have to decide whether they're going to rework them and bring those forward and have them approved, or decide not to. That's something that they have a few weeks to make, decision to make, if they want to have those rules in effect by October twenty-ninth. The rules in question, I don't think, for the most part, affect us really directly, although there's one regarding signage that I do want to take a look at. But they're still on track, and we, the next trigger we're going to be looking for is when those are filed with the Secretary of State. And I know the city is also starting to work on the process for the lottery, how that's going to work. And we're already receiving some input as to some ideas of how to do that in a way that's going to be fair, that we're receiving from stakeholders. So it's moving along. Thanks.
Thank you. Any other counsel? Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I had the honor and privilege this morning to attend a groundbreaking and make some remarks on behalf of the city with Enclave, who is developing and constructing, constructing a new two hundred and eighty-seven unit luxury apartment homes on the southeast part of Sioux Falls. They, the total project is thirty-eight point five million. And it's interesting, because that doesn't sound like that much with all the development and things going on in the city. But what an incredible project and that they're doing. And the group has some really exciting plans at the corner of southeast, or East Twenty-Sixth Street and Highway eleven. Not only are there plenty of cul-de-sacs to get lost on, on the way to get to where their property's going to be along Highway eleven, it was just interesting to watch that and to see that end of it. This group spends a lot of time talking about affordable housing or accessible housing, and we still have that need on the top end of housing as well, for people who are moving to our community and as things change. So the word amenitized came up a couple of times with the, they're planning a golf simulator. The amenities that are going to go in this project are going to be really incredible for the east side of Sioux Falls.
Thank you. Any other counsel remarks? Seeing none, we're going to jump right into a few budget presentations. The City Council Budget, Dave Bixler, please.
Good afternoon. Dave Bixler, Sioux Falls City Council Budget Analyst. For the Audit Department and the City Council, the wages and benefits, we have some personnel changes and insurance coverage benefits. Under Professional Services, we have the external audit of the city's financial documents and our fraud hotline. In Training, we have the ALGA memberships and conference. And in Supplies and Materials, we have the Audit Board software. And so for the internal audit budget, they actually are reduced from twenty twenty-one budget to twenty twenty-two budget. Also want to note that in the rentals area, we have the technical, or technology expense, and that's been increased across all of our programs, just to match up with demonstrated run rates. The City Clerk Budget Highlights, same thing with wages and benefits. There was a personnel change in insurance coverage benefits. There's also part-time labor for election support. Professional Services, there's the election and notice of publishing, training, the municipal clerk dues and the II MC Conference. Supplies and materials are the OnBase Highland Software. And just want to note that two hundred and twenty-seven thousand dollars makes up, or is the election expense for twenty twenty-two. And here's the City Clerk Budget. Again, you can see in the Professional Services, the increase of the two hundred and sixteen thousand. And again, you see the increase in rentals for the technology as well. Council Budget Highlights, under Professional Services, we have the Council Legal Services, the Council Pictures that occur after each election that are hung up on the, on the wall, and then their citizen, or the Community Survey. And then under Training, we have the Training for Council Staff of fifteen thousand dollars, the South Dakota Municipal League Travel, and the NLC and SCML Membership Dues. And we have budgeted for travelers for the NLC event. And under Supplies and Materials, we have meals for the council meeting evenings, city logo wear and memorials. And the City Council Budget itself went up, or is that forty, up forty-six thousand dollars? And the entire City Council Budget is up three hundred and one thousand, two hundred and nine dollars, twenty percent. And again, two hundred and twenty-seven of that, two hundred and twenty-seven thousand of that is for the elections. And with that, I'll take any questions.
Counselors, are there any questions? Counselor Starr?
Yes, and it's probably a better question for Mr. Greco, but I'm interested in the two hundred and twenty-seven number. For some reason, I have eighty stuck in my brain for election expenses and breaking it out. So is, I'm trying to, maybe I'm just five years behind on the eighty thousand.
No, you're not behind. It was about ninety-five and a little north of eighty for the regular and runoff back in what was budgeted in twenty twenty. So what we learned, obviously, in twenty twenty, hopefully, we don't go through a situation like that. But what this reflects is an increase, number one, in the pay to our election workers. So to keep us kind of on line with what Lincoln and Minnie Haha are doing. So it's about a ten dollar increase per day for the superintendents and the deputies, which accounts for a large portion of that increase. The other piece, too, and again, coming out of the Absentee Ballot Task Force, is increasing the number of absentee ballot processors on Election Day. Now, we typically don't have a huge number of absentee ballots, but I think a safe assumption going into this election, based on twenty twenty, is that we'll have more than we did, say, in twenty eighteen, significantly more. So we have more people dedicated to that, and we pay them about twelve dollars an hour. We've doubled the amount that we've used in the past, that previous mayoral elections. Also with that, on the front end, before we get to Election Day, I've budgeted for two, basically, they're listed as part-time workers, that they do have a limit on the amount of time they could work during the week, but we have two of them opposed to one, so that they can help assist with the absentee precinct in those two weeks leading up to the election, to both elections, if we have both. And additionally, we have what I call election or absentee processors, which was a key, key point identified during the twenty twenty election, the primary. People who can sit there and process the ballots, look at signatures, marry up applications to, to the actual ballot envelope. So there's an increased cost, obviously, of personnel. The other pieces, there is an increase in county supplies. That's the amount of money that we pay to the county. So again, I made an assumption that we'll have significantly more. And I said mail-in ballots. That may not be the case, but I don't think there's enough data to show that it's going to markedly drop off from what we saw in twenty twenty. So what I have right now is a percentage, and we do pay for the envelope. So one envelope that gets sent with an envelope inside to send back, plus the postage. And then some other minor things out there, well, not minor, but we are doing redistricting, so we'll have to send postcards out to, presumably, I would say, I planned on six precincts, relatively large ones. And then also any polling location changes. So I look at the last general election, and there were some that were kind of stand-ins due to COVID. So there's, there's a fair number, less than ten, but there's a number of those that we'll send a postcard to. And the postage for those is not exorbitant, but it is a lot of people.
Second, are we looking at a joint school board where we split some of those costs, or will it be?
So the process would be, and that's not captured in this budget. So the process is, we notify them, basically, next month, when our election is, they'll take it to the school board. The school board will consider it. They'll decide whether they want to combine with us. You'll take the action. But the bottom line is, if we do combine, then it'll be based on their last comparable election. I don't know what that number is. In twenty twenty, I think it was about thirty thousand dollars that we would end up getting reimbursed.
But we've budgeted, so assuming that.
We budget, assuming that we're not doing it.
No, totally makes sense. The other thing that, more of a statement, and one of the things, I guess, I wanted the council to discuss, or at least take a look at, is that the National League of Cities does do two events during the course of the year. And we've had this discussion in the past, that obviously, the main conference is the most significant, that the council gets the most out of. But I really think we're missing an opportunity to be involved in the DC part of it as well, and the lobbying that goes with that event. And possibly looking at, and we don't have to make the decision today, because we have the money, but maybe two go to each conference, or at least taking a look at it, because more and more of our budget becomes federal, more and more of the federal government is taking over responsibilities of local government and being involved in that discussion. We're too large, as the state's largest city, to not be involved in that discussion, I think, is leaving us behind. And it's one place that I think, as a city, that we need to be part of that discussion. The great thing about South Dakota is, we do have access to our federal elected officials. But when you're part of a group like the NLC, I just think we're at that point, as a city, that we're getting large enough that we need to be part of that discussion, and we need to be part of that group that's having those discussions nationally.
Thank you. Counselor Erickson.
Thank you. Is a citizen survey in this budget, too?
Yes, it is.
Okay. So one of the things, and this is just a statement, too, as well as I'm rounding out my term in May, so it won't really impact me as much. One of the things I think we should really, really take a look at as a council, is if that makes sense for us to keep doing it. Is the administration using it like we used to? Are we using it like we used to? Are there better tools and innovative ways that we can engage with the citizens to make sure that we're doing what they want us to do, and instead of just keep writing a check for thirty-five thousand dollars, or whatever it is, I can't remember the exact amount, but.
It's twenty thousand dollars.
Twenty thousand, still a lot of money. So for twenty thousand dollars, could we find something else to do for ten? I don't know, but I would challenge us all to try to think of something else that we could maybe do. I know those questions that we like to ask every single year are great historical knowledge, but I've got to think that there's a way that we can do it online or somewhere else when we only get thirteen or fourteen percent participation back, which is actually quite successful for a survey. So just my two cents on that citizen survey, that there might be another thing that we can do instead of that.
Thank you. No further questions. Thank you very much, Dave. Move on to the Mayor's Office Budget, our last budget presentation for the year.
Good afternoon, counsel. Thank you for having us. My name's Erica Beck. You know me, Chief of Staff. I think, actually, in the three years that I've been back to the city, this is the first time that we've presented the Mayor's Office Budget. So thank you for initiating that counselor's sale. I don't always have the opportunity to get in front of you all as a group and talk a little bit about our scope of work, what we have going on as an organization. Of course, you see certain things, but we don't have that opportunity often to speak to it. So I have one slide for you today. Whoops, maybe. There we go. One slide for you today. So our budget ultimately is eight hundred and seventy-six thousand dollars within the Mayor's Office. We have an increase proposed of one point two percent for twenty twenty-two, or just a little over ten thousand dollars. We have five individuals, full-time employees, within the Mayor's Office currently, consisting of Julie Wilson, who is our Executive Assistant to the Mayor, Brian Becker Connect, who's actually here in the audience. Brian, wave your hand, please. Brian's back there in the back. She's our Mayor's Office Communications Coordinator. We also have Rana DeBoer, who is our organization's Chief Culture Officer, the mayor, of course, and then myself. That who, that is the team of individuals that makes up the Mayor's Office. And I just want to express a little bit about these individuals, because I get to work with them each and every single day, as do many of our team members within the organization, but they are truly amazing. So I just need all of you to know what I see on a daily basis in each of them, because they have a passion for service, and they serve our organization and our entire community with that heart for service that I think all of us have, right? That's why we're involved in city government. And honestly, I could say the same thing about the entirety of our team, right? Our thirteen hundred-plus full-time employees, and I think six hundred-plus part-time employees at this point, they all have truly a heart for service, and it's really an honor to be able to work alongside of them each day. Real quickly, the budget presentations that you've seen thus far, presented by our team members, they each highlighted ways in which we're addressing those bolded areas on the screen. So scaling for growth, connecting with people, and taking care of today for a better tomorrow. This is not by accident. It's very, very intentional on our part. It's a way of us ensuring that we're casting vision from the Mayor's Office, strategically thinking and developing systems that serve our organization and city long after the Mayor Tenhaken Administration. Everything that we do is very intentional in that sense. We want to leave a legacy for the organization, so that ultimately, and Counselor Brecky, you know this, given your previous role as city attorney, everything that we do, we want to make sure has a lasting positive impact on our organization and on the community moving forward. So these are the foundational elements that we talk about within the organization at the executive team level and throughout all of our teams within the city. All of our colleagues hear us talking about the fact that our city is scaling, growth-wise. We're growing, and we, as an organization, need to be able to work in systems, work in vision and strategic thinking that helps us as an organization meet the demands of the community because of that scaling growth. A few of the other initiatives on here that I just want to highlight real quickly for you. Sioux Fifty-Two, you've heard about this. This is another way that we are trying to leave more of a legacy within the community. And of course, this is about building relationship and building connectedness within the community and throughout the community through mentorship. The Mayor's Youth Council, this was just rolled out. You will be a part of that conversation with these young people that are selected to serve on the Mayor's Youth Council. We're super excited about this. There are communities all across the country that have Mayor's Youth Councils. And the intent is to try to build relationship with our youth, because they're our future, right? It's a cliche thing to say, but it's the truth. They're our future workforce, and we need to have a different relationship with them, so that we know ultimately what it is that they want, the future of their community to be, and they can have a voice at the table and become better engaged and more engaged in city government doing so. In addition to that, undertaking care of today for a better tomorrow, the Onward Leadership Development Program, I want to point out. This is an internal leadership development program that we're actually in the third cohort of this year. The projects that these individuals work on are significant to the organization and the community. During the first cohort, I believe, we had a project brought forward in which a proposal was made to completely overhaul our performance review system. So we have done that. We've been working on that over the last eighteen months. And we now have a performance impact system that is being rolled out to the entirety of the organization. I believe Bill O'Toole, our HR Director, spoke to that to some degree. But it's truly representative, the leadership competencies that our team members are expected to meet within this performance impact system is very representative of our culture as an organization. So I'm really proud of that. I'm proud of that team for bringing that project forward. In addition to that, one other project, just as an example, that's come from that program, is the Veterans Tiny Home Project. So that was derived through a cohort that was part of this program. We're bringing people together across the organization, because remember, we've grown, right? We're an organization now of over thirteen hundred full-time employees, and they don't get connected very often unless it's very intentional. And so we're giving them the opportunity through this program to be connected ultimately, and to work together to identify challenges that we, as a city, or internally as an organization, are facing, and develop solutions to those together. So it's a great program, and we'll continue to move forward with that into the future, along with a lot of other training and development opportunities that we're pursuing in conjunction with HR and so forth. And then in addition to that, the last bullet point that I just want to mention briefly, we've talked a lot about succession planning. You've heard us mention that. In fact, it was one of the main driving factors in us bringing forward the role of the Chief Culture Officer. We have a lot of folks who are in the process or getting close to retirement. And so we are trying to do our best to ensure that we have succession planning in place, and we can prepare for those retirements, and ensure that we have people ready to step into leadership roles, because they've been given development, that they need to be successful. Ultimately, and then in addition to that, the Performance Impact System works right, hand in hand, with that succession planning effort, to make sure that the development opportunities that our people are getting are relevant, right? There are leadership values, there are core principles that we want all of our civil servants to have, especially when they're stepping into leadership roles. And that system ensures that we're holding our team members accountable to doing just that. So with that, that's just a couple of the initiatives that we're working on behind the scenes that we don't always have the chance to present to all of you. I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have about our budgets, our scope of work, our office, et cetera. Thank you.
Counsel, any questions about the Mayor's Budget? Counsel Brecky.
Just, can you give me a little more detail on the succession planning with regard to the retirees? I know that that was identified as an issue. Again, they call it the Silver Tsunami, and it's happening across the nation, and I know that was having an issue with us. And are you feeling confident that we're going to be able to replace that talent? And just, if you could just go a little more detail into that.
Sure.
How far you've come with it. I'm glad to hear that you're continuing to work on that and prioritize that.
Sure. Thank you for that. Excuse me. So the succession planning tool that's been put together is a series of resources, essentially, that leadership within our organization can utilize to identify key positions in which we really need to be focused on, ensuring that we have folks that are being trained and prepared to take on additional responsibility and fill in the future. And so that's really been the focus for our Chief Culture Officer, Rana DeBoer, along with our HR Department and all of our leaders. There have been some really great examples, actually, across the organization in which individuals, department leaders, directors, have utilized these tools to develop these skill sets that are needed for a specific position, and then make sure that we're training to those skill sets. Oftentimes, I think, you know, when a person's been in their position and their role for years, right, decades sometimes, their position has changed so drastically from when they started to when they finish. And so we're really trying to take a more intentional look at what those positions ultimately not only are, but need to be in the future, so that we're meeting the current demands, but also the future demands. And this succession planning toolkit and resource and coaching, truly, that Rana and Bill have been doing with our team members is really helping us with that effort. So thank you for that question.
Thank you.
Counsel Stilberg.
That was exactly what my question was, was kind of about the succession program, like what's involved. As an example of a program, I was just reminded of, I was watching a deal on Bill Belichick the other day, and he was talking about a big part of his development was Bill Parcells, who was the coach. And he learned from him, would pull him in the office once in a while, and he'd go. Every so often, when he thought it was pertinent information for him at some point, because he knew he'd be a head coach, he'd tell him about it, and he said that was really big on him growing and learning the job and being as successful as he was. So I kind of thought of that, as you talked about this, and was curious, I mean, is there, do you have certain people that you kind of work with, and they express interest? So you kind of groom them, take them under the wing, and do these type of things, or?
Yes, great, great point. And I'll just relate this back to the Onward Leadership Development Program as an example. And then in addition to that, the Mayor's Youth Council. So we have a lot of different opportunities to advance programs and initiatives across the organization and even throughout the community. And what we're really trying to do is give our team members an opportunity to be a part of these efforts. It doesn't have to be the same person each and every single time, leading one specific effort. So as an example, the Mayor's Youth Council. Mayor's Youth Council, while we, as an office, are absolutely a part of that, and we're driving that initiative forward, we have a team of people across the organization who have a passion for kids, right? They have a passion for youth, and they want to be a part of this effort with us. And so they're assisting us in developing the schedule of activities and events for these kids. They're the ones that are going out to the schools and meeting with the principals and making that connection, so that we can ensure that the opportunity gets communicated. And so without those individuals being a part of this, they wouldn't have an opportunity to do those types of things necessarily. So we're trying to give more opportunity across the organization to really better understand who our future leaders are, and better understand whether or not certain individuals that you might think want to be a people leader in the future, if they want to be a people leader in the future, right? They might just want to hone in on their skill and be the best at that skill that they can be, versus being a people leader. And so there's a lot of different opportunities that we're trying to work through the organization in order to ensure that we're preparing for the future from a succession planning perspective.
Yeah, I think it's an important program. So thank you. Thanks for the presentation.
Yeah, thank you.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right, we're going to move on now. It's a COVID-nineteen update from the City Public Health Director, Dr. Seema. Also, I see Dr. Elliott and Dr. Wildier here. I've asked that they come and give us an update on where we are today and what they see in the future.
Greetings, counsel. Charles Chima, Public Health Director. So I'm here today, as you mentioned, with Dr. Mike Elliott from Alvera and Dr. Mike Wildie from Sanford, to give a COVID status update. I know we had a press conference recently, but to take the opportunity to have a conversation with the council and to inform the community where we are. So I will give kind of an overview, and then I will invite the two chief medical officers to step up, to give their perspectives on the health systems. I'd like to start by pointing out that in the past few months, as some of us are already aware, we've seen an increase in COVID cases and hospitalizations in the community. So what we have on the screen is from our dashboard, that the incredible talent we have in the Civic Analytics Team out here in the city have been doing a great job of using the data from the state to create these dashboards, so that anybody in the community can look at these dashboards and get a sense of where we are. So as of today, we have over fifteen hundred confirmed cases and close to fifty hospitalized. But I'd like to point out that, thanks to, so that's in the last three months, right, we've been seeing this surge. But if we, to put things in perspective, kind of looking at where we've been, we've seen worse. So in the past year, we know vaccines have made quite a huge difference. If you look at the chart on the screen, you see that we've had, you know, a worst period where we have a significant number of cases compared to what we have today. However, it's also important to put things in perspective, to point out that even though we've seen worse, where we are today, the current surge we have, you know, the current level we are, which we consider a peak, in some sense, it's, there's a second highest peak we've seen since this pandemic started. So if you look at a number of cases, active cases, for example, or they want to derive the new cases, you'll see that we have a situation where all the previous searches we've seen, besides the one we had late last year around December, this is the second highest we are seeing. So it's a significant surge. But again, putting it in perspective, we've been at a worse situation in the past. And to a big extent, we can credit the vaccines for where we are today, because you can almost expect that if we haven't had mass vaccinations up to the level we have today, you can expect the graph to look much worse and more comparable to what we had late last year. the Delta variant, which accounts for most of the new cases in the country, including Sioux Falls as of today. Something that we know about this variant is that it's much more transmissible. So you have a few, even though we, you know, we have a lot more people vaccinated compared to last year, but because this variant is so transmissible, it's found a way that even vaccinated people can transmit the virus. But as we, we've seen from the data, which the hospital system should speak more to, even though we are seeing more and more cases, even among the vaccinated, the vaccine continues to do its primary duty, which is keep people out of the hospital and keep people, prevent people from developing severe disease. So even though we're seeing more cases, I think the next, the next chart will support that a bit. So as, even though the cases continue to increase, as we see from, you know, the past few weeks, so this one is looking at the last two weeks. The first one was looking at the last three months. In the last two weeks, you see that the cases continue to climb, but you also notice that the hospitalizations have begun, you know, started to drop in the last two weeks compared to what was happening in the last three months. So overall, hospitalizations and cases higher today than they were three months ago, but in the last two weeks, we're beginning to see hospitalizations drop even though cases continue to rise. And some explanation for that could be understanding that even so, think about those of us that have gotten vaccinated, we're seeing more and more people develop infection, but a lot of those people are not ending up in the hospital because they have that protection from the vaccine. So you, we might continue to see a situation whereby we see an increase in cases, but if these cases are happening, you know, if you have more in the vaccinated, then you'll expect to see fewer vaccinations. So I think the message there is really to point out that the way we get out of this pandemic is through vaccinations because our concern is if we can prevent people from having severe disease, from ending up in the hospital and consuming resources that, you know, that other patients might need, then I think, you know, I don't think we're so worried or so afraid about just exposures. What we're worried about is severe outcomes from the disease. So, and that's kind of pointed out that vaccines. So I'd like to spend the last two slides talking about the vaccination. To give us a sense of, we know the vaccination started late sometime in December 2016, December 2020 after the FDA gave the emergency authorization to the Pfizer and the Moderna vaccines. So we began a rollout in December 2020. We saw quite, you know, an increase in interest in the vaccines earlier on, as you can see from the graph. So this graph is looking specifically at month-to-month increase in the number of people that have received any form of the COVID vaccine. And what you see is clearly, as we know, in the first four months of the year, there was quite a huge interest and uptake of the vaccines, which helped us get to a high level very quickly. But over the summer, as we began to open up and, you know, relax some of the restrictions, in some sense, from a combination of reasons, one is you vaccinated the highly, you know, those are very super motivated, but also with the opening up, I think there was a bit of feeling, you know, amongst some populations as to, well, there was this feeling of as though COVID was over, so maybe there was no need to be vaccinated anymore. So over the summer, as we saw, there was quite a significant drop in vaccination, as you can see clearly from the graph. And that persisted almost to the end of summer. But the good news is that with the effort, we're making, raising awareness and also I think the concerns being raised by the Delta variant, more community members are becoming aware of the seriousness of the situation. And you can see kind of the second part of the graph that there is, there's been an increase in new, you know, vaccinations in the last two months. So that's how it turns out trending positively in the right direction in terms of increasing vaccinations and we hope it continues to go up so that we can move. So the last slide, it's just kind of giving some of the numbers. I know there continue to be concerns in the community regards to the safety of those vaccines, but I want to point out that worldwide, you know, more than 1 billion people have received these vaccines, more than 200 million in the US have received these vaccines safely. And here in our community, you know, Minnehaha and Lincoln Counties, we have over 140,000 members of community who have received some form of the COVID vaccines. So we know those vaccines are safe and we're not seeing any major side effects of concern among those that receive vaccine locally. So as of today, about 57% of our community have received at least one dose of any of the vaccines. And just about half of the population are considered fully vaccinated as of today. So we continue to push for vaccinations because again, we can't say that enough, the way we get out of this situation is through vaccination. So with that, I will invite Dr. Elliott to give some perspective from Avera and then Dr. Wildy from Sanford and we take questions at the end. Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. Dr. Chima's a little taller than I am. Thank you for inviting me. I think most of you know who I am, but for the record, Mike Elliott and the Chief Medical Officer at Avera McKinnon Hospital. Been privileged to serve in that role for a little over a decade now. Certainly welcome Dr. Chima to Sioux Falls, to our City Health Department. We were so fortunate, Avera, Sanford, Falls Community Health, the Sioux Falls Public Health Department, we developed such a wonderful partnership last year. I think our community benefited from that partnership and I know with Dr. Chima's leadership, we can continue with that. So I can't say there's been a lot of good that's come out of COVID, but the strengthening of that partnership has definitely been one of them. At Avera McKinnon Hospital and across our entire system, we will remain incredibly busy. Most mornings at Avera McKinnon, we are between 98 and 100% full capacity. Our adult ICU is somewhere between 95 and 100% capacity. Our pediatric ICU is at or beyond what we've typically considered at capacity. So, so we're full. As Dr. Chima pointed out, it's not just from COVID. This time we've got, I guess, a combination of things. We're just busy from all the routine medical things that are going on. Maybe we're a little busy from a delay in healthcare that occurred with the COVID surge last year. But when you take that and you add on to it, the increased demands that COVID is putting on the system, we are stretched thin. And, and actually, we're not as bad as other parts of the country. You may or may not know, we have a centralized transfer center, call-in center. We're receiving phone calls from as far away as Texas, Oklahoma, Louisiana, Tennessee. They're major tertiary care hospitals, some of them are on divert. They are rationing healthcare today in the United States. They are rationing healthcare and they're reaching out to places as far away as North and South Dakota to see if we have any capacity to help them. Hard to believe in this day and age that we're in this state, but, but we're here. Of the COVID patients in our hospitals, Avera Hospitals, about 80% of those COVID patients are unvaccinated. For those COVID patients that are requiring intensive care or a ventilator, 90% or greater are unvaccinated. Yes, there are breakthrough cases. The vaccine is not perfect, but it is really, really good at preventing severe disease. I shudder to think where we'd be at without the vaccine, without the emergency use authorization that was granted last December. If our only hope was to get through this, waiting for natural herd immunity to take effect, I wonder how many people we'd lose. At Avera McKinnon, in trying to be prepared for what might be coming, what has already come, we have reestablished our COVID hotline, ramped up our sample collection ability. We've worked with both our hospital lab and our research lab to provide rapid turnaround COVID tests. We have reestablished our Avera at-home entity to be able to take care of COVID patients and have several hundred COVID-positive patients that are currently being cared for in their own homes instead of needing maybe additional care that would require a hospital bed. Along with that, we continue to provide both inpatient and outpatient monoclonal antibody treatments and other treatments that have been approved for, for COVID. Again, while this is going on, we're just, we continue to be incredibly busy with all the other general medical care that has been required in our community. And at risk of sounding a little bit like a broken record, I just have to reemphasize how important it is that we all get vaccinated, as Dr. Chima said so well. Even though breakthrough cases are a reality and there's no vaccine that's perfect, right? Never has been, never will be, not perfect, but this one is really, really good. How good is it? A recent CDC study showed that your risk of being hospitalized or required being in the ICU is 29 times less if you're vaccinated than if you catch COVID and you're not vaccinated. 29 times less. Absolutely no mitigation strategy we have comes even close to that. Every discussion about mitigation strategy should start with, let's help everyone get vaccinated. If you need help finding a place that gives a vaccine, call, look online. If you need help getting transportation to a place where, that gives a vaccine, call. The city can help with that. You know, I hear a lot of folks say they're tired of this. They just want to get back to normal. They just want to be able to do normal things and not worry. I hear you. I empathize with you. I agree with you completely. But what I'm 100% confident of is that the virus doesn't care. The virus simply looks for susceptible hosts that it can spread to and multiply in, creating mutations along the way. We've listed so many mitigation strategies. It's so important for people to know you are not powerless. You have the ability to mitigate your risk. Yes, it starts with the vaccine, the very safe, the very effective vaccine, but you can still wear a mask, you can still socially distance, you can still stay home if you're sick, you can avoid large crowds, you can be smart about it. I applaud people that are already doing these things. We would be so much worse off if we didn't have the vaccine rate that we did. It could be better, but imagine how bad it would be if we didn't. Imagine how bad it would be if people didn't take this seriously, if people didn't wear masks, if people didn't stay home if they were sick or didn't try to avoid large crowds when feasible. It turns out burying our heads in the sand is not a good mitigation strategy. So with that, I will turn it over to my counterpart from Sanford, Dr. Mike Wildy.
All right, thanks, Dr. Elliott, and good afternoon, everyone. Mike Wildy, Vice President Medical Officer, Sanford and Sioux Falls. And I think a comment, a lot of comments have been made and appreciate those and I'll try to be maybe a little more brief so we don't reiterate things here. But for Sanford, we are currently, in the last few weeks, and Dr. Chima shared some numbers, and we're seeing that 20 to 25 inpatient number. It's relatively flat right now and that's, that's exciting. And that's, that's not to discredit anyone that's in the hospital right now, but we had anticipated maybe moving up a little more and we still are planning for that, knowing that that's what the rest of the country has seen. And so we also know that sometimes you sit at a level and it can pop up pretty quick. And so again, we're certainly planning on things like that. When we say we have 20 to 25 patients actively inpatients, that does mean too, usually we have about 20 to 25 patients who are no longer actively isolated but still needing hospitalization. And that's what we are running and that's what we have seen in the past as well. Folks that get this do get, some folks do get incredibly ill and just really require that prolonged hospitalization. As an organization, we have increased our mitigation measures. Once again, we're all masking inside, even in offices, not in patient care areas, et cetera. Really looking at our staffing and what we can do to enhance that, really looking at what we can do to enhance the wellbeing of our staff, the mental health of our staff and those we care for as well. We have ramped up and we had always going, going with our very successful home monitoring program to make sure that we hopefully can keep people safe and healthy at home where they're most comfortable. And so we'll provide oxygen and phone calls and things like that just to make sure people can stay safe at home with this illness. We have increased our ability to do the monoclonal antibody infusions. And I want to stress to the public that that's the importance of testing right now, is if you do get COVID and you do qualify under the emergency use authorizations, those monoclonal antibodies will reduce your risk of hospitalization in half. And those have been very successful and we have some information that we put out on social media about our success with the monoclonal antibodies that we're infusing. We have also expanded our drive-through testing hours, so that's readily available to get that as well. There's been a lot of mention of the vaccine and really just encouraging that within our community, encourage the council as you're influencing within the community to really take a moment to just, to encourage that. That has been very successful. It has been very exciting. I remember standing in front of this council back in December, January, I can't recall exactly, but talking about how as we go through COVID, to walk into our vaccine facility and see the excitement that's there. And it's, it's still exciting to see the numbers and the success we've had with the vaccine, but we know that COVID is going to be here, but we also know it can be at a much lower level. And so really want to encourage the safety, the effectiveness of the vaccine and also the significant impact that the current Delta variant and the transmissibility of that, as Dr. Elliott alluded to. We also realize that we're also really quite busy. We are receiving calls from across the country. We are trying to accommodate patients and keep that care as close to home as possible, but we're in the, we, our, our role is to really serve our fellow people. And if we get an opportunity to take care of someone, we're going to do that. And so it's, it's led to some powerful conversations and we don't like to be in those situations, but at the same time, we're there to serve anyone we can. With that, our busy season traditionally is coming up. Medical economics, traditionally toward the end of the, of the year, there's a lot of surgeries that people will elect to have, they'll maybe take some time off, get some things done. We'd like to be there for, for that and to accommodate that. And we got a pass last year on the flu season. We anticipate that not happening again. And so we do anticipate we'll be working with influenza as well and it's a nice opportunity as the flu shots has rolled, have rolled out. I got mine this past weekend. Really encourage those flu shots as well. That has not been as effective as the COVID vaccine, but very effective at tamping down influenza year in and year out. So with that, I think I'll stop and open it up to questions for myself, Dr. Elliott or Dr. Chima.
Thank you to all three doctors and I'll open it up to counselors for questions. Counsel Stilberg.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I certainly always appreciate and have for the last year and a half, your passionate and heartfelt remarks you guys both always have on this subject. I sure wish there was a magic word we could say that would get people out and get vaccinated. You know, I always feel like maybe a Nike campaign, it's safe, just do it. We hand out T-shirts. I just, I don't understand. But anyway, thanks again for continuing to plug away on that and to our director as well. Can you get the flu shot and the COVID shot at the same time?
You can, yes. Both can be co-administered. They're a little different technology and yes, you absolutely can.
Okay. I think that's probably about my only question, just encouraging people to go out and get their shots and thanks again for being here today.
Yeah, thanks for that.
Counsel Erickson.
Wasn't sure if you were going to call on me if you're looking the other way. Thank you. First of all, thanks for being here. Sanford's graphic chart that I've seen online is so good. I, I think that that really shares a story that you cannot deny. How many little red people do you have and how many little white characters are there on there showing who's vaccinated, who's not? Like you said, there's breakthroughs that, that happen, but I would encourage Avera, I don't, I know you can't steal their graphics, but if you can somehow share the same story of what you're seeing in your hospitals and even the, the public health facility of what you're seeing of people that come in that, that are testing for that, it is so impactful. It's so simple for that. I will share the story of, I'm not going to tell you who it is, it doesn't matter, but somebody very close to me that one had the vaccine, the other didn't have the vaccine. The one that didn't have the vaccine got very, very sick, didn't have to go to the hospital luckily, but the one that had the vaccine didn't even know that she had it. She had a sinus infection. She went in to get some sinus medicine. They said, ah, we better test you. She had COVID. She didn't even know it. And, and you know, there's a danger in that with spreading it to others that you don't know. The one that didn't have the vaccine got very, very sick, didn't have to go to the hospital luckily, but the one that had the vaccine didn't even know that she had it. She had a sinus infection. She went in to get some sinus medicine. They said, ah, we better test you. She had COVID. She didn't even know it. And, you know, there's a danger in that with spreading it to others that you don't know, but what a great thing to see that side by side with that. So I would encourage that. I have a question for whoever wants to answer this, whether it's Dr. Chima or somebody within the city. What are we doing for a PR standpoint for vaccines to saying, get your vaccine, it's safe? Kind of similar to what Councillor Selberg said. I saw a few videos before. I don't know that it moved the needle. I know that we were going to do some research to find out why or why not people are choosing to get the vaccine and what their choice is with that. I know that study's not done yet, but how can we move the needle for vaccinations for this? I have high school students, we go to the football games, people are not avoiding crowds. They're not avoiding concerts. We just saw a big concert, Open Bookings recently. We've seen them at other places. People are going to be out and about with their comfort level. I have my vaccine. I'm comfortable being out and about. That's my choice and a lot of others are as well. But I'm wondering if you could talk about what are we going to do for a PR campaign? I mean, you can't force them, you can't shame them. I'm not saying we need to give them a $10 gift card for a coffee shop either, but what are we going to do?
And before I turn it to, because I obviously can't answer that, I'll let Dr. Chima answer that. However, you make an excellent point. Thanks for bringing that up. In primary care, that's what we've been seeing with people that are vaccinated. Obviously, there is a unfortunate minority that do still get vaccinated and can get quite ill from COVID, but usually it's a cold or a sinusitis type infection. And the data has shown, at least in the last few weeks, the amount of virus that you're shedding is markedly less if you're vaccinated. So if you are at that football game and our band competition or wherever, which is really exciting, that's great and that's what we want people doing. Know that if you're vaccinated, your likelihood of transmission is much lower than anyone who is not vaccinated. So you try to keep hitting those points of something that might capture someone's excitement or willingness to get vaccinated and it is helping and we saw the numbers. And with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Chima.
Thank you.
So, you know, you bring up a really important question, Councillor Erickson, about the fact that COVID is still here, right? So, and regards to the PR campaign, as we, as you know, we've, I think we gave an update on the funds that were located for PR campaign a few weeks earlier. But what we're doing right now is so, for example, when I'm done with this presentation, I'll be attending one of the focus group conversations that we're having in the community this evening, just to sit in and be able to answer questions that people have. And so part of what we're trying to do is, you look, we know that 57% of the population is vaccinated. We know there's a portion of that, a portion of the remaining, 43% that is not eligible because they are children less than 12. So we have really maybe about 30 something percent of the population that we can reach right now that are eligible for the vaccine that we're trying to get to, to get vaccinated. So we're taking a precision approach of trying to figure out who exactly, what proportion of our population and where do they reside and kind of understand more and more as to be more targeted in our approach in our messaging. So later this week, we've been working with the communications, our communications team in the city, both from the mayor's office and, you know, the communications and the IT department to develop some, a new round of messaging campaign. And we are refining, so we're taking the preliminary findings, you know, we're getting some insights from the field of what they are hearing from the field of people that are doing the surveys and the focus groups. And then as we learn more in the next month, so they're looking to wrap up their surveys in about three to four weeks. And then we have much more precise information as to the continuing drivers of hesitancy and how that might be different from different demographic groups in the city so that we can be able to target our messaging. So for example, if concerns are around safety, then you're able to target your new promotional videos around that. If the concerns continue to remain around other issues about maybe lack of trust in the system as a whole, then perhaps you're looking for a different kind of messenger and trying to identify who it is that is the right messenger to do those videos. Do you need to put up more experts or do you need to bring more laypeople doing those promotional campaigns? That's what we're doing right now is as the number of people that are unvaccinated get fewer and fewer, you need to be more precise in your messaging and your efforts to kind of know exactly who is not vaccinated and what, why are they not vaccinated and what do they need to hear to move the needle.
So if I can ask one follow-up, and maybe this is a question for you and/or the hospitals. I know it's so easy, I mean, I'm in a box store and on the intercom it says at least four times by the time I'm leaving, come get your COVID shot if you want. I mean, it's easy to do. However, we know that some people won't do that. Are the hospitals and/or the city going into maybe some of the larger employers and saying, maybe it's a construction company that they're very busy right now before the snow flies, they want to keep going that, hey, I'll go in there. I know for my kids, we chose to get them vaccinated, but we were very strategic to do it on a holiday. One got really, really sick, the other one didn't even know he got the vaccine. But we did it so they didn't miss too much school and whatever, we didn't know what kind of reaction they would have. But I'm just, I mean, you can't go into the schools, I get that. I mean, I know that it's a very, very sensitive topic for some folks that really don't want it. But for those that just, maybe it's an inconvenience, do we have a way that we can take it to them?
Absolutely. So in the next, in the next two weeks, so part of what we're working on, the health department is developing a mobile vaccine unit, which will be active in the next two weeks. And what we intend to do with that is to be able to continue to support. We know right now we have a, we have a record of different community events that are going on in the community. Some is going on at the Empire Mall, some are going on in other community locations. So what we want to add to that is a mobile vaccine unit that is able to go to anywhere in the city at any notice. So you're absolutely right. And we also intend to have a request system whereby groups of people, you know, a church, a family that have a significant number of people could request to say, hey, could you break the vaccine to us? And we'll be more than willing to send out a mobile vaccine unit to deliver that. So absolutely working on that to make it very easy for people, you know, irrespective of any constraints they're facing, to be able to request and get a vaccine at any convenient location that they prefer.
Wonderful. Thank you.
I'll just add to that, Councillor Erickson, at Vera, of course, we'll go anywhere we're invited. We're not going to strong arm our way in any place, but we have been invited to talk to schools, to businesses. I'll share, one of the businesses decided that all of their employees that chose not to get vaccinated got to come to listen to me talk. As a result of that, several hundred of them decided to go ahead and get vaccinated. So I'm not sure if that's a positive or negative, but a few more hundred people got vaccinated is compared to putting up with listening to me. So we absolutely are out there in the community, small businesses, large businesses, anywhere we can go. Last week, I was in a smaller surrounding community talking with members of the school board. So absolutely. You know, inside the hospital, we plan for the worst. Outside of the hospital, we absolutely are doing everything we can to try to keep our schools and businesses open, keep our communities safe and healthy and mitigate this as much as humanly possible.
I did have a handful of questions, but your presentations all answered them. I do want to talk about the vaccines. I think part of it starts with those of us saying that I was vaccinated very early on when it was available. I believe in vaccines. I believe this one is safe. My whole family was vaccinated and I, I'm a pretty small cog in the wheel, but I think it's important only in the sense that those of us, I mean, people knew where I stood on things like mask mandates and things like that, but I believe in the efficacy of vaccines and I believe it's safe and I believe they're tested. I get flu shots every year and I don't even question their safety and efficacy. And so I just want to encourage people regardless of where I stood on other things, myself and my whole family were vaccinated. And as it relates to vaccines, I'm going to be interested to see what data we get from any studies, but we all run in different circles and I would just offer, anything is good, but I have a sneaking suspicion, at least from my, from the people I talk to and the places I'm at, that it's not going to, it's not going to be about access, it's not going to be about awareness. The vaccine is very available, not that there aren't some groups who, that may be an issue, but in large part, I think you have people who are fundamentally, and this is unfortunate, fundamentally, they're distrustful right now of authority, of, they're distrustful of what politicians are saying to them. They're distrustful of, unfortunately, you know, and for some of them, even what the medical community says. If somebody prominent in the medical community says get vaccinated, they're automatically on guard. You know, so it just is what it is. There's a segment I'm finding that are already resistant to just vaccinations in general, that, you know, they're just anti-vaccination. And I think a lot of it is going to come down to not only the message that's being delivered about the safety, but also the messenger. I think there'll be, the more that we can get people who maybe are people that they maybe more trust will be, will be very important. I think it's very impactful if, particularly those who maybe were maybe for or weren't for maybe mask mandates or lockdowns or, you know, so some of those prominent individuals in the media and politicians would be more vocal. Anybody who can do that to show that across the aisle, regardless of how you feel about any of this politics of this, that the vaccine, this is the way out of it. If you want to get out of it, it's going to be, it's going to be vaccines and then that they're safe and trying to dispel, unfortunately, you know, as, maybe I'll just finish that, Bill Burr, I won't say it in the way that he did, but he basically said that the unfortunate part of the internet is there's not a fiction and a nonfiction section. And so don't believe what you read on Facebook. That is not the place to get medical information. The internet's a horrible place for getting any of that because anybody can put whatever they want. Talk to your doctor, look at the data, look at me. I, I'm still healthy. My family's fine. We're doing good. I haven't had side effects. Nothing's been implanted in my brain. I was told that. I'm not being mind controlled. So get vaccinated. I believe in it regardless of anything else. Please get vaccinated. It's really the right thing to do. Thanks.
Councillor Breckie?
Just a few questions about the Delta virus and what it's doing to children. My understanding, again, from just the news sources I've heard at the national level is that, you know, we can kind of expect that there's going to be an availability of the vaccination between, for five and 12-year-olds sometime this winter, but I haven't heard anything that's predicting when it might be available from zero to five-year-olds. And my understanding is that it is starting to fill up the pediatric wings of hospitals, the respiratory rings. And to me, you know, if this thing is getting stronger and it's attacking children, that's a game changer. I mean, that's just a game changer in terms of how desperate we're going to get to want to fight it and resist it. But I, you guys, Mike did say that the pediatric ICU was beyond, you know, what it can, its capacity beyond what was ever expected. And so when you say pediatric, exactly how little are we talking about it and can you talk about it in two categories? Babies, you know, zero to five and then five to 12. And the reason I'm asking is because I think we need to get out in front of that in our planning because if we're only doing five to 12 in the winter, how long are we have to, and the thing is starting to attack babies, you know, how long are we going to have to do it? Because it seems to me then we really do need to amp up all of those precautions because that's just a whole different game.
So with the Delta variant, we're seeing more children affected, which we unfortunately anticipated just because of, I think as Dr. Elliott pointed out, the transmissibility of the virus. So the initial virus, the SARS-CoV-2 virus, on average spread, if I had it, I would spread it to 1.3 people. It's a statistic. There's not a .3 person, but on average, that's how you'd spread it. The Delta variant spreads to about five to nine people on average, hasn't been quite mapped out. So the point of that is the more people that have the Delta variant, the more people that are going to get it. And that includes children and that's why we're seeing it more in children because they're, and they're also unvaccinated because the emergency use authorization only goes down to the age of 12. So we are seeing pediatric hospitalizations. We are seeing newborn nursery or including NICU or neonatal intensive care unit admissions and treatment or, excuse me, precautions, treatment, et cetera, for COVID in that population as well. We don't know exactly when there could be consideration of an emergency use authorization for vaccinating. It sounds like the groups are going to be five to 11-year-olds and then zero to five-year-olds. We do know that the FDA, the ACIP that looks at the vaccine data is probably going to meet mid-September. There could be consideration either for a third dose for those who have been immunized, could be consideration for five to 11-year-olds. We don't know, but when they meet, chances are they're reviewing something. I would be very disappointed if we didn't, weren't able to vaccinate, vaccinate people under the age of 12 by New Year's. I would hope for even sooner. I think the zero to five-year-olds are going to be the last population vaccinated. We also have to make sure, you know, there's reasonable safety and evidence and the studies have been done as well, which they are being done. So those will have to be considered. What we do see in that pediatric population, just like in the adult population, there's children with vulnerabilities, chronic underlying medical conditions that tend to do worse with COVID, but there's also, odds are, the more people that have it, the more healthy people that are going to have significant complications from COVID. And we're seeing both of those things as well. And obviously, the pediatric population is, it's, makes you very emotional, very, very gut-wrenching to see a child affected by this. And so I think to Councillor Knightzert's comments as well is, you know, I realize that I may not be able to provide enough influence for someone to get vaccinated and if it takes some other motivation, great. That's wonderful. Please thoughtfully consider it. If it's about keeping children healthy, great, perfect, get vaccinated. Because on average, you're spreading this Delta variant to five to nine other people and some of those are children.
Then just a question, a follow-up question. When you say it's more transmissible, can you put it to me in terms, kind of non-scientific that I can understand? I mean, what, if it's more transmissible, I mean, I know we were fighting droplets versus aerosol and that kind of thing, but you know, what is there, if it's more transmissible, is there more that we can do to, and that we should be doing in order to prevent the transmission?
I think it's, you know, I have a lot of respect for people to make very informed choices out there and to understand that the Delta variant, if you have it and you're unvaccinated, you have a very high what's called viral load. You carry around a lot of virus and it's going to spread on average to five to nine people compared to the previous versions of SARS-CoV-2, which the viral load was not quite as significant. And so therefore, on average, it's spread to about 1.3 other people. The mitigation measures, vaccine by far is the most important, but the other mitigation measures, as you carry this around with those high viral loads, it is about the masking, staying out of each other's, you know, physically distancing from each other, the hygiene, touching the potentially infected surfaces. Those are things that are still effective. Vaccine by far is the most effective.
And we can carry it even though we're vaccinated. We can still be hosts for it. So those things that you've just described apply to those of us that have been vaccinated. We maybe need to take more personal responsibility again in, and not, we've kind of enjoyed the luxury of our vaccination, giving us freedom, but maybe we need to, again, take the personal responsibility, taking those extra measures because we could be carrying it around. And again, just back to the pediatric thing, I think one of my biggest concerns and why I say it's a game changer is if, you know, daycares struggle already, you know, with how they have to operate to try to keep babies from not infecting babies, but if they became incubators for it, you know, and it's, you know, and it's easily transferred that way, that's going to really affect everything. It has a trickle-down effect. It's going to affect, you know, if they have to shut daycares down, then how do parents work? And then there's a whole nother area of discussions that have to happen. So just want to get out in front of those thoughts and those discussions.
And I think Councillor Erickson made a good point about the businesses and, you know, coming into a busy season, want to get things wrapped up before the winter and things like that. Another reason to really thoughtfully consider vaccine and just those mitigations. Another reason to really thoughtfully consider vaccine and and just those mitigation measures because you will have, you know, you can have children that are ill and they have to be at home and you have to be at home taking care of them. And and at the same time, you want to be out there working, you have things to get accomplished. And so, just the more mitigation vaccination that we can have out there, the less vulnerable you are to those sorts of life events as well, which can be incredibly challenging. They're challenging for us in healthcare as well.
Thank you.
Counselor Kylie?
Thank you. I would just say, I'd just like to add regarding our younger population, that in order to protect the youngest among us, we have to, as adults, make good choices and decisions. We have to, right now, since they do not have a choice in the matter, those that are zero to 11, we as adults have to make that decision to vaccinate in order to protect them. They do not have a choice. They rely on us to make a good choice. On the flip side, if we don't make that choice of vacci- vaccinate, then it potentially has that negative impact on our children. So, I would encourage all adults eligible for this vaccine to do that, to receive the vaccine and protect those among us that don't have the choice now. And then even when they do have the choice, it's going to depend on adults to make that decision for their children. Because obviously, a child under the age of 12 isn't going to make that decision for themselves. So, you know, they, the polio epidemic was dealt with very swiftly. And a lot of speculation is that it involved children. It did involve adults as well, but it involved children. And so, the population was very quick to get vaccinated. And I hope that this population and people today will see the impact that it can have on our kids and and the impact that vaccination could have on the whole process. Okay, my question, Dr. Elliott. Compared to last year at this time, active cases and new cases, where where are we at right now? I mean, what I've been looking at, it seems like we're either at or maybe even a little above where we were last year with new cases and active cases. Can you, can you comment on that?
Sure. First of all, thank you and thanks to all the council members for your affirmative comments about let's take this seriously, let's get vaccinated, let's protect our community, let's protect those in the community that aren't eligible to get vaccinated. Thank you for that. It's a great message. You know, looking at a rough graph and and Dr. Chima had one up there, where we're at now, I would put us kind of where we were at about the same time last year. We were at that same number in terms of a number of positive cases, a number of hospitalizations. And if you remember what happened in October and November, I am not predicting the future in no way, shape or form. But we do know that we can go from where we're at to really high numbers. We all hope that the vaccine has a significant mitigation strategy there and that we take things seriously. And we don't get there, that hopefully this Delta variant maybe dies out faster than the variants we were dealing with last fall. You tell me what the weather's going to be like a month from now and and my predictions on COVID numbers might be about as accurate, maybe.
I appreciate, I appreciate that information because I I consider your comment, because I was thinking along the same line. I shudder, or you you stated, you you shudder where we would be at without the vaccine. And considering the fact, and I've often stated this, considering the fact that we now have over 50% of our immediate Sioux Falls area population fully vaccinated. And then on top of that, another nearly 7% that have received at least one of the two shots. And and yet, our case numbers and our active numbers are where they were at the same time last year. That is really indicative just how virulent this Delta variant is. I mean, this is should raise much more, much higher level of concern of what we were dealing with at the same time last year. And that's with well over 50% of our population fully vaccinated. So, please, again, do what the rest of us have done or at least consider. My best advice is consult with your personal physician. Please do that. Consult with your personal physician. I have heard, I mean, there's a lot of misinformation out there about the vaccines. And I have heard recently that young women as young as high school age are avoiding vaccination because they're fearful that when it's time, they won't be able to have children. Now, it is pretty early in the ability to study the impact. I don't know that any of you are reproductive specialists, but how do you, how do you deal with questions of that nature?
Sure. So, in terms of how to deal with questions like that, I look at the CDC website, I try to read the literature. I talk to my OB colleagues. You're 100% right, none of us are reproductive experts. But those sources of information tell me that there is zero, zero scientific evidence that these COVID vaccines would have any effect on fertility. There isn't even, from a physiologic standpoint, there isn't even really a thought process as to how it could possibly happen. This is messenger mRNA and people go, oh, my goodness, well, that sounds to me like DNA. And oh, my goodness, that sounds to me like it could be disrupting our genetic material. It does not work that way. Messenger RNA technology for vaccines was looked at in the 80s, in the 1980s, decades ago. You know what they found, what one of the major problems was when they first looked at it? It is so very friable. It doesn't last very long outside of a test tube. And so, how do you make it last long enough when you give it in a vaccine for it to actually have the effect you want it to have? For it to cause your body to start making proteins that'll help fight the virus? They had to develop an envelope, and that's a very simplistic explanation, but basically, a biological envelope that protected this messenger RNA long enough for it to do what it does. It doesn't, it does not interfere with our DNA. It in no way, shape or form interferes or intermingles with. It cannot possibly have any effect on fertility. I hope that the social media source that first put this out there is held accountable. What he has done, in my humble opinion, is criminal and he should be held liable. I encourage all of our young women and women of childbearing age to talk to your obstetrician, to get the facts, to understand more about the way this vaccine really works. We unfortunately, as Dr. Wilde said, are seeing babies in our neonatal ICU whose moms had COVID during pregnancy or at the time of delivery and are having untoward effects from that. We are unfortunately seeing moms that have had COVID during pregnancy and have had horrible, horrible symptoms as a result of it, admitted to our intensive care unit as a result of the symptoms that they have had. Young, healthy, vibrant women, but they don't seem to handle COVID very well when they're pregnant. So, to all of those women, I tell you, talk to your OBs, follow the science, get vaccinated to protect yourselves and to protect your your babies.
And just to add to that a little bit, I also understand that vaccinated women who are breastfeeding, that there's been no ill impact on their children. In fact, they're, they maybe have actually seen a positive impact.
Correct. No, no negative side effects. And as a a woman's body develops the antibodies, that gets passed through their breastmilk. And so, the infant from breastfeeding gets some passive immunity. Not likely real long-lasting, but at least some immunity while they're breastfeeding and certainly, as you know, too young to be vaccinated through another mechanism.
Thank you. And then my last question is about booster shots. We've heard a lot about that lately. Can you tell us where our health systems currently are in providing booster shots for? And that would be the third shot is what I'm referring to, especially for those of us that are, among us that are immunocompromised and then even beyond that.
Yep. So, we need to make a differentiation between the third shot and the series, which has been FDA-approved for people who have certain underlying medical conditions, weakened immune system. We are in the process of giving those third doses. What our healthcare systems are not doing, because it has not yet been FDA-approved, is a booster dose. We hope that that booster dose becomes FDA-approved in the relative near future. And once it does, we will implore our plans to help make sure that folks get that booster dose.
And there was one other note here. Individuals who've had COVID and the importance of still being vaccinated, could you address that?
Oh, absolutely. Happy to, and that's a great question because it it comes up. And and I'll answer it a little bit with a question. Let's say you've had a cold or let's say you've had strep throat. Do you walk around thinking, well, I've had it once, so I won't get it again? Not many of us do. We realize that we are still susceptible. Having COVID, particularly having COVID early on, when it was the original SARS-CoV-2, may provide some protection against the Delta variant or the Lambda variant or the Mu variant or whatever variant we're going to see next. But it's kind of questionable as to how much. And your immune system's response to that initial SARS-CoV-2 virus was rather nonspecific. So, it created a lot of antibodies, some that may be helpful, some that may not. The benefit of these vaccines is it's a specific target for immune system to go after. And it really helps fight the original SARS-CoV-2, which was designed for. And luckily, it still has great effective protection against the Delta variant. Now, there may come a day, there may come a day when the virus creates a variant that the vaccine doesn't protect against. We hope not. One of the benefits of this messenger RNA technology is we can add to it relatively quickly. And so, we may be able to spin out a new form, an updated form of the vaccine that does cover a new variant, if that should come. But but study after study has shown that even if you caught the SARS-CoV-2 virus the wild way, naturally, that a vaccine on top of that is significantly advantageous to your immune system and doesn't pose an increase in risk from somebody who didn't have COVID but got the vaccine.
Thank you very much and thank you to everyone for being here this afternoon.
Counselor Starr?
Yes, thank you, Dr. Elliott. One of my takeaways from today is your comment earlier about we can't bury our, or burying our head in the sand is not a good mitigation strategy. I attended your news conference or yours and Dr. Wilde and and Dr. Chima's news conference last week. And I look at the dashboard that Dr. Chima put up earlier. When do we panic? When, you know, the the comment that was made at the the news conference was that mandates are for politicians. And this body saying that, yeah, we're getting vaccinated and we're doing our thing and we're, we think that's important. When are, do we act stronger than that? You know, when does, and maybe it's more rhetorical and I apologize for, you got stuck at the stand longer than Dr. Wilde did. So, he kind of backed away once. So, maybe let me back off of that a little bit. How far away are we from limiting or stopping routine care in our health systems locally?
Well, neither one of those are easy questions. You asked, you asked it a little bit first, you know, when do we panic? The answer is we don't. We will be cool and collected and calm-headed and we will put our resources together and we will give this community every last ounce of effort we can to make sure that we remain safe and you can receive the care you need when you need it. Period, end of story. When will we have to start rationing healthcare? Well, depends on your definition of rationing. We rationed healthcare last year. We held off doing non-emergent surgeries for a while. I don't like the term elective surgery. Not a lot of people just, oh, I'll volunteer for surgery. So, there, you know, elective surgery is a little bit of a misnomer, right? But we did have to hold for a little while on doing non-emergent surgeries for personnel, for bed capacity, because we were short of masks, for all sorts of reasons. So, to some extent, we have already experienced a little bit of a rationing of healthcare. We, we shut down some of our clinics or took them back to 50% in order to shift people from the clinics into the hospital to take care of the hospital sick patients. That in some ways, shape or form, is a rationing of healthcare. At what point in time will we have to pull other levers and have more difficult conversations? In the background, we're preparing for those things. We prepared for those things last year. Our hope is we never have to use them. But we better be ready in case we do. Thankfully, we didn't last year and we've got some capacity yet this year before we would need to do anything like that.
One of the things that-
Counselor Starr?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Just before you start, I'd just like to remind everybody, we have a hard 5:30 stop to allow for public input. So, if we don't get to your questions, I apologize for that, counselors. We'll try and get them to the doctors. Go ahead, Counselor Starr.
We've got a good start. One of the other things that that was talked about at the news conference was some of the Sorry, I lost in my notes a little bit and got sidetracked there. One of the, one of the things that I heard a physician talk about was population immunity. Counselor Kylie did a nice job of talking about some of the myths. And I haven't seen that term used in too many places, but they basically said because our rate was so high in South Dakota that we had probably built up enough immunity and we wouldn't see a peak. And that was prior to the Sturgis rally and they were making the comment that that will do that. We haven't seen population immunity and we certainly aren't anywhere close to herd immunity. Why would a person who's had COVID already need to go out and receive a vaccination? I've heard a lot of people said they've had the antibody test and they're high enough or they feel they are. Have you seen anything that's measured where they're covered because they've already had COVID and they don't need that vaccination?
Yeah, again, I I can tell you that for the same reasons that just because I've had a cold once, doesn't mean I'm not going to get it again. Just because I've had strep throat once, I'm not going to get it again. Just because you've had COVID once, doesn't mean you're not going to get it again. Particularly as the virus develops variants, any immunity that you may have developed to the initial SARS-CoV just may not be applicable to Delta. And so, I've had COVID once and I survived. Maybe it was relatively mild. Why would I, why would I risk or why would I bother going to get a COVID vaccine? Again, you have to understand that the COVID vaccines that we have available to us today are some of the safest and most effective, if not the safest and most effective vaccines humans have ever seen, ever developed. So, it's an incredibly safe insurance plan, if you will. If you're not vaccinated and get COVID, you're 29 times more likely to end up in the hospital than if you're vaccinated, even if you've had COVID in the past. I think that number kind of sums it up.
No, that totally, it's there. I did have one question for Dr. Chima, if I can. I'll get two minutes, I can get it in.
Two-minute warning, Counselor Starr.
All right. I'm interested, last week, we did some vaccination clinics across the city in combination with the Sioux Falls School District. I'm interested in numbers. Was there, was it, how was it received? Did people show up? You know, because we've done that, I know we've had that discussion back and forth that, you know, we're, we're out there, it's everywhere. Are are we convincing enough people to be there? Was it a good use of time and and resources?
So, yeah, so we, over those three days, we were able to get, I can't remember if it's 51 or 57. it's 51 or 57, but 57 people vaccinated over those three days, which again, it's, you know, about 57 people who were previously vaccinated. So, at this point, any individual who can get vaccinated, we appreciate that opportunity to get more and more people vaccinated. And that's part of what, part of why we're taking a precision approach, where we, we really need to identify populations that have lower vaccination rates and focus our efforts on those because then you can have more yield for your efforts, and you're targeting those you need to target.
Thank you. The other, really quick, as the Public Health Director for the City of Sioux Falls, as an elected body, a policymaking body, what do we need to do today? What more than telling people that they need to be vaccinated can we do? Give us the help that we need. Again, it was from that news conference last week. It's our job to take action and do something. What can we do? What do you need us to do as the Director of our Community Health Department?
I think it's for us to realize that we need to keep working together, so on two, on two issues. One is obviously, we cannot emphasize enough the importance of vaccinations because that's a long-term strategy. That is how we get out of this situation. So, anything that we can do to get our constituents, our, our community members to understand the importance of vaccinations and to get vaccinated. But two is recognizing that until we get to that point, we are COVIDed something in the past, we need to continue to take mitigation measures. So, getting vaccinated doesn't mean that we throw every other caution to the wind. It's important that, especially for, we've spoken enough about children who are not eligible for the vaccine right now. The only way we can protect them is by doing the things that are reducing exposures, avoiding crowds when we can, and in, you know, in our school settings, in any places we have congregation of children. Seeing as much as possible, we are making efforts to at least help children to socially distance, and, you know, prudent to help people that are not vaccinated continue to wear masks. And when we're in crowded settings, right now, we have a high level of community transmission. So, when we're in crowded settings, it's, you know, the recommendation from the CDC is that we use masks to reduce transmission going on in the community.
And to use Dr. Elliott's words, risk mitigation starts with vaccination.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. That's all the time we're going to have for this today. I cannot express how much I appreciate you coming back and giving us an update on where we are, still a crisis situation. I understand that. Thank you very much. And councilors, I encourage you to reach out to, if you have more questions, to any of the doctors that are here. The three doctors have done a great job. With that, we're going to move into public comment. If anybody has a comment on any of the subjects that we talked about today, please come forward. You have five minutes.
Scott Ersmann, Sioux Falls. First off, I was a little astonished by the price of the election, $250,000. Now, I'm all for spending money on elections, but we all know in a year that's with an incumbent mayor, and it has only one challenger as, so far, and two incumbent councilors and two empty seats. Not quite sure. What I'd really like to see on that is a breakdown. I believe we spent about $80,000 or $90,000 on the last election. Seems kind of crazy that in two years, it jumped doubled in cost, and I would really like to see a breakdown, line by line, from the council of what we're spending that $250,000 on. Kind of sounds like some consultants are making a little money on the side there. Anyway, as for COVID, you know, I've been telling people that, ever since COVID started, that people have been literally losing their minds, literally. I'm wondering if COVID's having some, some effect on that. A great example is right here in the city. We got $50 million from the federal government. Do we think that we should spend even, you know, maybe a portion of that lining the streets with billboards to get people vaccinated? Doing PSAs, telling people to get vaccinated, telling people to wear masks? No, we spent it on butterflies. The whole purpose of the money was to help us with the economic downturn and the stuff with COVID. I have literally, the education from the city has been virtually nothing, and we, we scratch our heads and wonder why nobody's getting vaccinated. I can kind of tell you why. Look at Vermont. I think they're at 70% or 80%. Maybe we should look to Vermont and see what are they doing to get people vaccinated? No, we ain't going to do that. School district's the same thing. I've talked to some teachers this weekend who are vaccinated, and they've been trying to get an answer out of leadership there. Are you going to have a vaccination mandate? Are you going to encourage people to get vaccinated? No answer. The first thing the city should do to set an example is do a mandate on all city employees. The school district should do the same. The county should do the same. Public employees are an investment of taxpayers, and their health and well-being is an investment of the taxpayers. It should be mandated, and you don't need permission from Donald Trump. You don't need permission from Christie Queen Noem. You can do it. You have the legal authority to do it, and you should do it. You know, the doctors come up here, and it's like a broken, and no, no offense to them, but it's like a broken record. Vaccines work. Masks work. Our hospitals are full, and we sit here and we go, oh, we got $50 million from the federal government. We'll spend it on a butterfly house, while people are dying. This isn't the cold. This isn't West Nile, where we spend a lot. We probably spent more money on West Nile and Emerald Ashmore than we do on COVID, to tell you the truth. I, I, I just, it puzzles me how we know where, we know what the solution is. We know what we need to do to get there, but we don't do it. We do all these press conferences and briefings and everything else. It's not that hard. Just go do the work. Take the money that you were given, spend it on a highly educating program, and show people that vaccinations are good. I've been reading a bunch, you know how many vaccination shots a milit, somebody in the military has to get when they, when they enlist? It's a list about this long. This isn't, this isn't, it's been doing it a long time. You're not violating anyone's constitutional rights. That's BS, because you have a choice. You can either get, you can get vaccinated. You can have a mandate in the city employees if they don't want to do it. There's the door. That's your choice. I have a feeling we're headed for a big, rough road, people, this winter, and it ain't good. Just take some of that moldy money that we're spending on, I don't know what, and spend it on an education program and hit, hit it hard now. Council might just have the power to do it. Now, the courage, I'm not so sure.
Any other public comment?
I'm not going to take five minutes because y'all have executive session here. Kylie knows how long it's going to take. Again, it's your body. It's your choice. Did Sanford and Abara tell you how many nurses are quitting at the hospitals? Because I know some that are quitting. Let's put politics aside, they're quitting at Sanford and Abara. Did anybody drill them on that? No. People, the numbers are decreasing because people are dying. So, when you have 130 people in hospital beds and five people die, your numbers go down. Biden just put that the armed forces got to get vaccinated. Do you know how many people's going to leave the armed forces? It's your body. It's your choice. It's your choice to have unprotected sex or not protected sex. It's your choice to have a kid or not to have a kid. Have an abortion, have an abortion. We cannot put vaccinations and shove it down people's throats. We can't do that. I encourage the city not to mandate that all city employees get vaccinated because half the city will be gone. I'm telling you. I, I know some of your council members are on vaccinations, but I'm going to tell you right now, half the city, if the mayor or y'all mandated, half the city will be gone tomorrow. You can't shove this down people's throats. It's their body. It's their choice. Nobody can make nobody do nothing. So, y'all better think about that when y'all want to mandate for our city employees here. We got to keep the city employees. We got to get separate doctors and surgeons and, and nurses, but they're all leaving Sanford and Abara. So, y'all need to do y'all's research, get y'all's numbers on how many has left already because they pushed this. And then, religion is exempt. So, in our policy, religion is exempt. So, you either take it or you're gone. That's the policy for Sanford and Abara. So, where is these nurses going to go that have degrees at? They're going to have to go to Brookings or somewhere else that don't mandate? So, I'm just letting you know here. I'm against mandating city employees because we need our city employees. We don't need them walking out the doors because they were shoved down their throats that you have to get this vaccination.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I'm Linda Oliver. I moved here back in October of last year from California because of all of the devious and dangerous mandates they were trying to put in place for the people. So, when you guys, and I love the fact that our governor here is fighting for us, but we need you to fight for us too. Okay? We need you to fight for us.
Ma'am, is this, we're still on public comment from the-
This is about the mandates. That's what you guys were just talking about, right? Were that, what you were just talking about, the mandates?
There was no mandate on our-
No, 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 no. I'm talking about the vaccines for employees.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay. I wanted to say mandates are not law, first of all. Secondly, the shots are not vaccines. It's poison, and it's to depopulate the nations. And I was, sent a video last night of a young woman in Chicago who was kept from treatment for COVID, and there is already natural treatments out there. There's already like ivermectin and, and also hydrochloroquine that works. That works, and that's all we need. And we want you to give it back to us. We want you, in every state in this nation, to give it back to us. We deserve it, and no one should exhaust themselves higher than God where they choose what we have and what we don't have. So, we want you to give it back. And I brought this here because you guys are violating the Nuremberg Code. That vaccine, well, I'll say the poison, is a, is a, is not approved. It's been just extended for emergency use, and you guys are making people think it's been approved by the FDA, and it hasn't been. And we want you guys to fight for us, and we want the testings to stop. We want the vaccines to stop. We want the medication back that helps. People are dying needlessly because you guys are sitting on your hands wanting people to die, and doctors and nurses are going to be brought up on charges, if they're not already, for the Nuremberg Code because they're violating that code. And, and, and it's, and this is for you guys, and it is, their punishment is death because they violated that code. Everyone who is not speaking up for us is violating that code, every one of you, all, everybody, and we want it back. We want the medicine back, and I thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comment? Seeing none?
Mr. Chair?
We're adjourned. We're not going to, I apologize to the city attorney. We're not going to have time to move to executive session. So, we're going to just adjourn. Thank you, though.